Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Bi-State Development Board of Commissioners meeting to order on Friday, February 18th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. We would like to start the meeting actually before roll call by introducing our newest Commissioner, Dr. Deborah Moore, representing St. Clair County, Illinois. Welcome to the board, Deborah. We look forward to hearing from you, working with you, and taking advantage of your expertise in these areas that Bi-State covers. So, welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. I look forward to participating.
Thank you. Myra, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Pastello.
Present.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
There.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
And a quorum is present.
Thank you. We had anticipated holding a recognition this morning for outgoing Commissioner from Madison County, Justin Zimmerman, but because of the inclement weather and some other issues, we're going to postpone the item until our next board meeting on April 22nd. Were there any public comments cards submitted?
No, no public comments were submitted for today's meeting.
Thank you. Then we can move on to Agenda Item 5, which is the approval of the minutes of the November 8th, 2021 Executive Committee Open Meeting. The minutes were provided for review in your board packet. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'm sorry, we need, we need a roll call vote. Is that correct? Do we need a roll call?
A voice vote sufficient.
Great, thank you. Next item is the minutes of the November 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners. The minutes were provided in your packet. If there are no corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the December 10th, 2021 Special Board Meeting, Open Meeting. They also, the minutes were also provided in your board packet. I need a motion to approve if there are no corrections.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The last set of minutes is the December 28th, 2021 Executive Committee Open Meeting. The minutes were provided in the packet, in your board packet. Are there any corrections? Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you all. Next item is Item Number 9, a report of the President. I would ask President Talby Roach for comments.
Morning, everyone. I'll try to keep this brief as we have a lot of significant issues to move through. But as you know, and you got both emails and texts from me, we, the team moved through really an incredible storm response, and that's really what I wanted to highlight in my, in my talk this morning. Our new Executive Director, Charles Stewart, and his team, I think responded really incredibly well to an extremely difficult weather situation. Look, Commissioners, we had senior level managers, people who normally are in suits, out there knocking ice off the cantonary in order to keep service running. We had the embedding of our new, of our security team, who've now become a part of the team and building them up and figuring out how they are helping with transit. For instance, moving people, helping people when we have delays in service. These kind of coordinations are the things that this organization should be doing. But I also want to note, there's also back office support that happens. Look, in that, in the worst day, the first day, who was coming into the main office? Look, all those folks in HR, they were still showing up because we got to get the payroll out, folks, and they were still showing up when the ice was hitting the streets. My point is, is that we're working very hard as a team to respond to these things. We also went through a post-incident report, and for instance, we, we analyze our response to a storm, to an anomaly like that. Unfortunately, not that much of an anomaly. We will have ice storms again in the future, and we need to see how we can do things better. So we did a post-incident report. We had a very good meeting. Mr. Charles Stewart headed that. It was very, very informative, and there's some things that we could do better. For instance, I thought that we could do better at cleaning the snow off several of our, some of our steps, and for instance, on the platforms. We need to do better when we're hit with a snow event like that. So, what we want to do, what we want to commit to you, is that we're going to continue to do better every single day, but I also want to recognize the team's hard work through that very difficult storm and ice, and I think they performed their jobs admirably, but we can always get better. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report, Talby?
It does, Chair.
Thank you so much, and thank you to everyone who supported the team during this difficult time. We've had several bad weather incidences this year, and it's particularly difficult when we're short-staffed, so I just want to extend my appreciation to everyone who has been helpful and glad that people stayed safe. I wouldn't have wanted to knock ice off, off a MetroLink line, so I appreciate your doing that. In my stead, it was hard enough for me just trying to clean off my walk, so. We can move on to Item Number 10, which is a report of the Operations Committee, and I will provide this report. Just give me a minute. Virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on January 22nd, 2021, following the Audit Finance Committee meeting. The draft minutes of the, of that meeting are included in your board packet today under Item Number 11. The Operations Committee is introducing four items for the consent agenda for your consideration today, under Item Number 14, with the committee's recommendation of approval. Those items include contract modifications, the contract with WSP USA MetroLink Station Enhancements, that's Resolution Number 1109, the Metro Operators TSM and Public Safety Uniforms Resolution 1110, MetroLink Downtown Tunnel Repair Design Contract Modification Resolution 1111, and the Contract Award on On-Call Public Relations and Media Services Resolution 1112. At the January Committee meeting, an operation report was also provided by Jessica Meford Miller, Executive Director of Metro Transit at the time. This includes my report for the Operations Committee.
Chair Winmiller, I believe that was a previous report that was given. I don't believe that is the one for today's meeting.
Really? The January 22nd, 2021 Operations Committee?
It should be titled "For the February 18th Meeting." If you would like, I could read what was submitted for that.
Sure, that'd be great. Could you also check on the, on the Audit Committee report? Do I have the right one there?
That one should also be titled at the very top as "February 18th." But I can read both of those for you.
Okay, it looks like I have the wrong, the wrong report, so please do. Thank you.
Sure. A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on January 28th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the board packet today under Item Number 10. The Operations Committee is introducing nine items on the consent agenda for consideration today, under Item Number 14, with the committee's recommend, excuse me, recommendation of approval. Those items include Item Number 14A, Agreement Between Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and Bi-State Development, Resolution Number 1179. Item Number B, Soul Source Contract Authorization for Professional Engineering Services Phase II, Engineering and Design and Support Services, Rehabilitation of the MetroLink Cross-County Extension Tunnels and Stations, Resolution Number 1180. Item Number C, Contract Modification, Contract with WSP USA Incorporated, MetroLink Station Enhancements, Resolution Number 1181. Item Number D, Skinker Bridge Rehabilitation Project Design Contract Time Extension, Resolution Number 1182. Item Number E, East Riverfront Stair Contract Time Extension, Resolution Number 1183. Number, sorry, Item Number F, Soul Source Contract Authorization for Replacement of MetroLink SCADA System, Resolution 1184. Item Number G, Contract Award Bus and Van Inspection Services, Resolution Number 1185. Item Number H, Heavy Duty Transit Buses, Resolution Number 1186. Item Number I, Letter of Agreement between Bi-State Development and the Jerry Costello Group, LLC, for Consulting Services for the St. Louis Regional Freightway and Bi-State Development, Resolution Number 1187. In addition, at the January meeting, an operations report was provided by Charles Stewart, Executive Director of Metro Transit. That concludes the report.
I apologize for that. I printed out last year's report, 2021. That was completely my fault. I appreciate you keeping a good track of me, Myra, so. We don't require a vote on that. That's informational only. We'll vote on that later. I do have the correct report for the Audit Finance and Administration Committee, which I'll give now. The, a virtual meeting of the Audit Finance and Administration Committee was held on January 28th, 2022, immediately following the Operations Committee meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your board packet under Item Number 11. The AFA Committee is introducing one item for consideration today with the committee's recommendation of approval under Item Number 14J, Intergovernmental Agreement Between BSD and the Regional Justice Information Services, Resolution 1188. There were several informational items that were committed, that were presented to the committee at the January meeting, including the IAD Audit Follow-Up Quarter, Summary Quarter for FY2022, the IAD Status Report for the Second Quarter of FY2022, the IAD SSO Status Report for the Fourth Quarter of Calendar Year 202021, the Treasury Safekeeping Accounts Audit Ending September 30th, 2021, 401K Plan Audit Update, 2021 Pension Evaluations Update, Financial Statements, Treasurer's Report, and the Procurement Report. This concludes my report for the Audit Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Next item is the report of the Safety and Security Meeting. Since the January meeting was canceled, there's no report for this committee at this time. Are there any adjustments to the consent agenda?
I just have a quick question. Do we have any plans to meet in the security anymore?
There's a meeting scheduled for, I believe, March. Is that correct, Chairman?
That's correct. That's correct.
That was the only meeting that was canceled, and we'll, we'll be back to our regular schedule in March. If there are no adjustments to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through J, as referenced in the committee reports and as outlined in the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is this a voice vote, Myra, or?
Yes, a voice vote.
Thank you. All those in favor, for approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item up is the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of St. Louis and Bi-State Development for the 2022 Gateway Go Youth Fair Program, Resolution 1192. I think Talby is going to provide some comments.
I am. Thank you. Good morning again. So this is an expansion, actually, of the Gateway Go program, which we have run cooperatively with the City of St. Louis to get disadvantaged youth passes to ride on MetroLink and Metrobus, except the difference this year is that the City of St. Louis has, has provided for additional funding for the program so that it can be expanded more than just the summer months. This is a very valuable program with getting disadvantaged youth to those jobs, whether that be at the traditionally places like the zoo, even some of our employees at the arch and the riverboats operation. This is a very worthwhile program and looking forward to it, and also most excited that the city is providing funding for this, and there's a line item in there, and it's noted in the White Paper of $250,000. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The next item is Item 16, the Memorandum of Agreement, the Loop Trolley, Resolution 1193. And Talby, would you give comments, please?
Will do. Good morning. Our Commissioners and the public are asking Bi-State Development the legitimate question of why we are getting involved in a program like this, in, in a troubled project. The answer is really quite simple. We, we are dependent on the long-term funding through the federal government. As a matter of fact, even within today's board packet, we will be asking for federal funding, for instance, transit buses. Over the next four years, we'll be asking the federal government for 80% funding for nearly 120 transit vehicles. In addition, there's other projects, very worthwhile projects. We've had the successful electrification of the Grand Project. That had, critical to that project has been this kind of federal funding. As a matter of fact, we've put a grant application in for further electrification at the DeBoliver facility. The point is, is that avoiding a federal default is key to the future, not just of transit in the region, both in Missouri and Illinois, but also for Bi-State development. We work every day with our regional office in FTA, and having a good relationship with them and moving forward in our long-term future is a very, very important component here. Yes, I agree. This is a troubled and tough project. It's not my favorite. I will, I will make that very clear. But what we're talking about is how we develop transit, both in Missouri and Illinois, and the long-term future of an organization like Bi-State. You rely on me to solicit for these funds from our federal partners, and what I am telling the Commissioners is that keeping that relationship strong and robust and working through difficult projects is indeed one of our taskings. Now, I want to make it very clear that, for instance, this is simply a contractual and management agreement. If the current configuration of, of the Loop Trolley were to run out of money, we would run, we'd stop running service. No Bi-State dollars will be used to, to run the Loop Trolley. Let me make that very clear. This also includes indemnification provisions, so there's no additional liability to Bi-State, and also it includes provisions that we would run limited service with, with our partners at FTA. So we would cut this down to four days a week and try to run it at a minimum so that we fulfill the federal requirement to use these assets. In addition to that, I also want to note that there is no additional liability, and we would simply do this for a three-year period to start, to be sure we can get the assets running, and sit down with FTA and be sure that it is a reasonable and viable project. I really appreciate the Commissioners' support on this. I know there's going to be multiple questions about it, and I am prepared to answer those. But please, I would appreciate your support, and of course, please understand that my job is to figure out what is in the best interest of the region and Bi-State, and I do believe that this plan is in the best interest of the organization. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Talby, I have quite a few. And first, thank you for calling me yesterday. I do appreciate that, and, you know, we, we talked about some things, and, and I really hope also that the board is, has an open mind still on this, because it was, what, two years ago that we voted, I believe it was unanimous, not to take on this Loop Trolley, maybe one, maybe it was you, Rose, I believe, but anyway. I remember that meeting, and the FTA was in there, and we asked them a lot of questions, but Talby, the questions that I have right now would be, you agree that one of the biggest challenges that Bi-State has right now is staffing shortages, probably, correct?
Yes, I would agree with that.
All right. So much so that we've had to even cut back on certain services and routes, things like that, right?
Yes, so there, there'll be a report, an update report given later in this agenda from Charles Stewart about the issues with labor availability. That is accurate.
It's next on the, the agenda, and we've had to have special meetings for this, and just to try to figure out how to, you know, accommodate everything, and I think you're doing a good, good job as, as good, best we can. These cutbacks, I think you would agree, have affected passengers in our region. Would you agree to that?
Oh, of course. No matter what, whenever you reduce transit service, it has a discernible effect on our customers, and I would agree with that.
Yeah, and, and these are the passengers, and I think the, the board understands, these are the passengers that don't have a car, don't take a car, can't afford maybe an expensive Uber. They depend on the system. These are the folks that were there to serve the most, and we've had staff shortages, not just in operations, but mechanics as well, correct, Talby?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, I guess my next question is, how many employees currently does the Loop Trolley have on staff, as far as operators?
Well, they don't really have any staff for operating because they're not operating. They just have two staff right now. And we would, we would look at this from, you know, a minimal basis and try to take metro employees, professional drivers, and that's one of the advantages. So, we do know how to run systems like this. We, we have an excellent safety record, and we will be able to staff it with the professionals who I believe will be able to run it and run it, run it well.
They don't have any mechanics right now on, on staff either, right?
They do not. That is correct.
And everyone's well aware of, the public's well aware of, this trolley system has had major issues. Not just that many people don't ride it, and it, and it hasn't made money, but it, it's constantly breaking down. I, I think, what are the, a couple of the trains didn't fit the tracks. Even the last ride, all the, the news was there, and the trolley broke down, while the news is, is filming. And so, you're asking us, our biggest issue is staffing right now, and the, the people that we're supposed to serve the most, that need it the most, that we're here as a board, as a transit agency, all right, we're going to take away from that. We're going to take our eye off the ball over here and, and have to help and, and start up a whole system that I don't know that anybody, the public is demanding that this back. So that, that's one thing, and, and I, the last, or the, I just want to add this too. You said about the getting transit dollars. We, we have to get this money. We sat on, in this, this meeting, and we asked over and over again, the FTA was in the meeting, we asked them, would this affect Bi-State moving forward as far as grant funding? He flat out said no. Okay, and so, a lot of people, and we talked about this on the phone, that, that there, there's this misinformation, I feel, that's out there that, well, all of us could be on the hook. This is the Trolley Development District. That's who got the grant. So if you live in Normandy or Florissant, or you live in Swansea or O'Fallon, or in my case, Collinsville or Edredsville, you're not on the hook for this money back. We, there's, there's taxing districts that make poor decisions all the time, and then those, those taxpayers then sometimes have to pay that money back. That's who's on the hook, not the whole region. So my thing is, and you admitted this, this, Talby, on the phone, and I appreciated this, I think in public, this is not transit. This is not, we have a bus that goes up and down this road. This is not transit. So for us to take our resources, mechanics that we're short of, staffing that we're short of, we're desperately in need, these routes have been cut, and our passengers haven't been able to get the service that they, they've wanted because of these staffing shortages, is to take our eye off that and then put our resources into the Loop Trolley, does not make any sense right now. And I asked the board to, at least at the very minimum, let's table this and let's talk to the FTA. Let's get them in here, and then they can tell us straight up if this is, would affect Bi-State's ability to get grants in the future. That's all I have right now. I'm, I'm interested to hear what you guys all think.
There are other comments from board members or questions?
I've got a few. If, if no one else does, I'll, I'll yield to somebody else if they want to go first, but if not, I'll. And, and Derek, thank you for your comments. You know, I, I wasn't on the board two years ago, so I'm not sure what that conversation with FTA, FTA was, and I think some of your concerns are, are well-founded, you know, that, that the issues with this project, as Talby laid out, are, are pretty clear. The reason that I am inclined to support this specific agreement, and that I would not have supported where I am on the board two years ago, I would have been a no vote. And when this was even floated in the news a couple of months ago, I probably would have been a no vote. I like the way this is tailored in that this is not going on our books. We do not assume liability for it. If they don't have the money to have it run, it doesn't run. You know, you, you, one of the things you mentioned, and this was a good point, is on the last day it, it ran, you know, one of the trains broke down. Well, it is my understanding, and Talby can correct me if I'm wrong, that if one of the trains breaks down, that's not on Bi-State. We don't, we, we don't pay to fix that, the, the, under this agreement. We are being brought in under this agreement in a, in a consulting capacity, and if I'm wrong, Talby, you can correct me, but we are being brought in in a consulting capacity to help run this thing as best as it can be run with their money, not our money, because we have the expertise to do that, and, and the consequences. Now, I, you know, I, again, I wasn't there two years ago, but I do believe FTA sent us a letter in December, January, a couple of months ago, where they did reference clawback. Clawback and, and some of the, and, and I have heard said, and, you know, I'm not a particular expert on this, but I have heard enough folks, whose judgment I do trust, say that the consequences of not doing this, for, for future things that I care a lot about, like potential MetroLink expansion, or like BRT, or any of the other projects that we care about that require on federal funding, but the consequences of not doing this could be bad for that. And even with that being said, Derek, I agree with you, if this project put, if this agreement put this thing on our books, if this made us liable for it, I would be no. I'd be a no. I think that this is crafted in a narrow way, and so Talby, I will just give you those questions. Once again, the, the train breaking down, hypothetically, train breaks down, what is MetroLinks, what is, not MetroLink, what is Bi-State's responsibility if that happens?
You are correct in that there is not financial liability for us to pay, you know, to pay for that fix. We would use the existing assets that are generated, or existing revenue stream out of the tax district, and that would be paid from the TDD to Bi-State to make the fix. I will say that also I have asked Chuck Stewart and his team to do that assessment of condition, which we would, we would move on immediately, should you approve this. One of the things we have to do is a fundamental assessment of conditions, and we will be doing that. If I may, Chair, can I make one additional comment? Because it, it's, these are, of course, facts. Thank you. So, that's right. We do need to be very careful for our customers. Ultimately, our customers are, are the biggest concern, and cutbacks in service based on- in service based on labor availability is, that's a completely legitimate point, Commissioner Cox. That's absolutely right. But so is our capacity to get federal funding as we move forward, whether that be Northside/Southside, whether that be electrification, whether that be any of a myriad of projects. My point is, is that the, the support from the federal government as we move forward is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. If that hundreds of millions of dollars moves from, let's say, 200 million to 150 million, okay, because they're not, we're not getting as many grants competitively because we have a default on the books. Again, a default as a region, completely legitimate point. The problem is, is that will devastate service for those same customers. I'm trying to create a long-term vision. This is very tough project. I'm gritting my teeth just like everyone else. I'm trying to be very upfront about the difficulty of the project. But I am also trying to point everyone to a long-term vision of transit that is not just sustainable for just the next 12 months, but is sustainable within 48 months and 60 months. But those concerns that both Commissioners Gladney and Cox made are legitimate and fine. It's just, there are not simple answers here. They are complex, and it is my job to bring them forward. And I do think even in the context of a difficult project, it is something worth moving forward on.
Before we move on, maybe it would be best to, to just clear up, you said, we, we wouldn't pay for the fixes. Well, first of all, the trolley system, it's not better than it was the final day that it ran, is it? No.
As of right now, today, no. My, my team, it is not. However, I will say that we do have that kind of expertise, the very expertise that, that has been the Achilles' heel of the, of the trolley. For instance, things like wheel profiles and a wheel truing machine and, and all of these very sophisticated, we do that, we do that every day.
And Talby, you're answering my question is, you said that we wouldn't fix it. Well, who would? We wouldn't pay for it. But my point is, I guess the point is, we don't have a problem paying employees. We have a problem getting employees. We don't have enough of them. That's why we've had to cut back on, on routes and things. Okay? So we don't have a problem paying them. We have a problem getting them. Who's going to fix these? You just said that we're, we're good at fixing that stuff. Well, we're going to take our resources then and work on this trolley system that it's no better today than it was the last day that it, that it, that it was in service. It's got major problems. We're taking our resources, is what I'm trying to say. And as far as funding is concerned, we're not going to move forward until it's all paid for. Well, they were denied their grant from East-West Gateway. They don't have any funding, all, all the, other than the tax money. And when it first started out, it, it has, it, it wasn't able to run, what, one year? It couldn't fund itself. So how is it able now to fund itself? It doesn't make any sense to, to, you know, as far as just those two questions, as far as who fixes it, and how's it going to be sustainable financially?
Yeah. If I can, if I can speak to that distinction, because that distinction is definitely correct. When, when I say, and when I respond to Commissioner Gladney's is financially, no by-state money. Correct. That is, that is absolutely correct. And some hires would be made in maintenance personnel associated with, with the restarting of this as we move through negotiations. That is, that is right. And there is some difficulty with that. But to say that there's none, none of our resources used, for instance, my resource, the resource of me, that's true. Some of, I don't want to dodge that question. That's, that's legitimate. But I do think that those other long-term liabilities outweigh some of those issues. And for instance, some of the things that hampered the trolley project, I do think that we have some of the expertise to help it. But I'm, I'm not going to say that it is a, a, a super sound project. Look, its track record speaks for itself. I will say, however, that the, it is supported by the Tax Development District. And for instance, in our budgeting, we are using 90% of 2019 numbers to do projections to be sure that it is financially viable. And, and the, that, the growth in that tax generation does appear to be reasonable so that we could get this to a self-sustaining point. I'm not, I don't want to say that I'm promising that. I'm just saying it's looking good. And, but it does also require other capital. And for instance, it, the TDD has submitted for that CMAC grant through East-West Gateway. That was submitted last Thursday. And that's for East-West Gateway Coordinating Council to consider. That would be an additional federal resource that could be dedicated to it, that also makes sound, or is sound practice and uses money that would otherwise not be allocated towards this asset in order to make it work. So those are just a few of the financial considerations that are going on.
Go ahead. I've already gone.
Oh, yeah. I was just gonna, just, you know, a couple of points that, that were, that were shared that, that I agree with, is that I think that avoiding the federal default is very important because, as was stated, I think that although it may not directly impact us today, it certainly could shine a bad light on us as we look for future funding for expansion and the other things that we look to accomplish. I think it's important to, to, for us to recognize that there are no by-state dollars used to run this, run the system. And we can do more than one thing at once. I think we can do more than one thing at once, and we're positioned to support this. So because we're positioned to support this with very little, very limited risk, I think that it is incumbent upon us to, to help out, to chip in and help out. And it's going to benefit us in the future by being a part of this project to hopefully bring it across the finish line and get it to a point where it, where it becomes solvent.
Thank you. I think there was someone else who, Fred?
So, so Rose, let me see if I can capture this right. So we've got to try to make the best of a, a bad situation. And acknowledging that Commissioner Cox makes good points. It's your belief that if we think about those we serve in the long run, they, they would be better off by our doing this because of the funding that would be put at risk, would we not do this? Rather than some of the potential short-term costs in terms of labor, which Commissioner Cox has raised, and I assume if not us, there is no other who could step in and save this and prevent that default. So I'm assuming it is up to us, we're the only ones that can do it, and it is your judgment that in the long run, those we serve are better off by us stepping up and taking this without financial risk to us, or any liability risk, than if we allow the default. That was not as phrased as smoothly as I would have liked. But am I correct in what I just stated?
Yes, Commissioner, that is a correct assessment in my mind.
I'm going to give everyone a chance. I have just one thing I want to ask, but are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I just have a quick one. Talby, East-West Gateway meets next Wednesday, is that correct? Excuse me.
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
Is this being taken up by them? Or you can address that, maybe?
I don't think so. I, I believe the timing for the CMAC will be closer to August, because now, now what happens is the, the application is in and it is being evaluated and scored by staff. It will be scored. I will note that it scored very high. I think it was one of the highest scores of the CMAC applications last time. But it, it, it simply didn't move forward at that time. But of course, this agreement wasn't in place, so I'm hoping that increases its odds. And yeah, this is a definition of a difficult decision and a difficult situation. I'm just trying to hopefully point to everybody to what the long-term consequences are.
It area will be taken up in August, is my understanding. And if it is granted, those funds would be available early in 2023.
Okay. Thank you.
So just a follow-up on that, then. Commissioner Simmons, since this is not going to be taken up, will it be a board decision about the $1.2 million CMAC grant?
Yes, it would be a board decision on that grant application.
So in the event that, that, for some reason, did not occur, what would be the consequences for the trolley?
It would stop running. Okay?
I just, I want to be clear that if, if, if down the road, the CMAC grant isn't, isn't approved, there's no possibility that by-state would be responsible for continuing to operate the trolley without the additional federal money?
That is right. There's, there's no way, no statutory way that I, that, that any of our assets could be transferred cash to, to that entity. This, this agreement does not allow that. There's definitely a firewall financially, and I, I think that's a very important provision. And hopefully, those type of provisions are the ones, in other words, narrowing the agreement, including the pieces for indemnification and no transfer of asset, not leaving the long-term liability for the grant, are very important provisions to hopefully at least lessen some of the risk associated with the project.
And that was the purpose of my question about the CMAC grant.
And mine as well, because I read the, the MOU pretty carefully, but I just wanted to make sure that I was reading it. And also, the legal opinion that came with it, which is basically that we are not on the hook financially for any of this. I do think that it would be helpful to us as an organization to support the MOU because I think we have the potential to have this operate in a limited capacity. Obviously, it's not the kind of public transit system that we operate regularly. It's not a bus or a train. And those are bread and butter, and those are critically important to everyone. I'd like to see an opportunity for this to get some kind of traction, excuse the pun, and have people be able to, to ride the trolley and see whether or not it can become a viable part of our transportation system. So, and there's, for me, that was where I came down when I read all the information. And, and I just wanted to say that.
Rose, I got a few comments. I listened, and I agree with all the comments, Commissioner Cox. You're right. I was one of the ones a couple of years ago that voted no, just like the, the majority or all the board did. But I think, Talby, when you look at what we were being presented back then, as opposed to what we, we have before us today, our liability is nowhere near what it was going to be when it was presented before. Was that correct?
Yes, it's a very large change, mostly because one of the provisions of that was that we had some residual grant money that was, that, that was available here, that we were proposing to financially support the trolley. And that was a provision that many commissioners were uncomfortable with. So, so yes, this is a very, very different agreement. There are, also, it would, it would have been on our self-insurance policy. That is actually a good way for us to save money. However, the liability considerations, I think are a very legitimate concern of the, of the commissioners. And I, I know that that was a, a large concern with the previous, previous version. So some of those firewalls, including financial, including liability and so on, have been added in this version, which I'm hoping improves the chances of this moving forward, and that is more acceptable to the commissioners.
And, and I think you'll agree, we've spent quite a few conversations this week ironing out some of those concerns that I've had on the indemnification, because I wanted to make sure that there was no liability coming back on to our agency. The one question came up about what happened if the money runs out, and you've answered that. But under the termination clause, I see where there's 120-day notice that would have to be given by either party. So if the money runs out, does that mean you, we give that 120-day clause to the trolley district? And is there any legal thing that says that we have to do that? I mean, if there's no money to operate, I think we just stop operating. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. Well, like you said, and I've, I've heard from the other commissioners, it is a tough decision. But to, to further piggyback on what Commissioner Cox talked about, the, the staffing, and that was another question you and I had this week, that was one of my main concerns. But again, the expertise that I think our staff has, as far as reducing some of the routes, those routes that, a lot of them, that's been reduced, has been talking about for the last couple of years, under our re-imaging program. Is that my understanding also?
Yes. So a lot of, a lot of the metrics, we're, we're shifting subjects here, but, but it's legitimate. Yeah.
I'm trying to get a, a, a better understanding from Commissioner Cox, that yes, it's probably going to have a staffing problem. But until we get in there and find out the condition of those vehicles, those trolleys, we've got the man, we've got the expertise to take care of those where before that wasn't in place. So that was a question I had also.
But make it clear, this is not Metro reimagined. The, the last six months, all these cuts that people are griping about is not Metro reimagined. So you, we can spin it however we want. These are real cuts that affect real people.
No, we're.
Those routes are different, Talby, correct, than Metro reimagined?
So, you know, I, so the, the fundamental, one, one of the biggest tasks that, that the, this commission, and for instance, the public asked me to do, is try to see how the region is changing and then make adjustments to our transit service so that it makes sense. A lot of the metrics that are based on that kind of frequency of operation and so on are metrics from 2018. And quite frankly, 2018 might as well be 1955. We are seeing a major change in how transit services should be delivered in the greater St. Louis area. And that comes not only with where our ridership is, but also our labor availability. So moving to the service changes that are contemplated for March, they are to try to match up labor availability and where the market is. The market was planned through a set of metrics of 2018. And for instance, with some of the fundamental changes that everyone is seeing with the work from home environment, from the changes, there are going to be necessary adjustments to the system. And my job is to take those metrics on what the public is asking for, along with the availability of resources, so that we maximize those, and maximizes those as best we can. For instance, with projects like Northside/Southside, where we're building assets into black and brown neighborhoods, which have not been done very well traditionally, and competing for those dollars is exactly what we're talking about. I, I, I share everybody's concern about the difficulty of this project. It, it is difficult. But what I'm trying to focus everybody on is, we have to make the hard decisions so that we are changing the products that we are delivering to a changing region. Our region is changing as well. And you rely on me to point those facts out. And, and we are changing. And so for instance, even some of the service reductions associated with March are indeed to respond to a change in demand. What we really can't do is, as an agency, not adjust, not adjust when we see things. Do the things the same way we used to. Do the same old thing. Commissioner Cox, you've made that point to me many times. Hey, we got to be willing to make hard decisions and do that. We have a hard decision in front of us. I'm really doing my best to point it in front of you. I think it's a very productive conversation. I'm really doing my best to put it in front of you. I think it's a very productive conversation. Thank you.
I have a quick clarifying question, because Commissioner Cox, I agree with your point on, you know, the assets we're using as far as some of the staff. Some of these, these route adjustments that we've seen in recent months, that's, my understanding, that's largely driven by the operator shortage. Is that correct? The, the bus, the bus operator shortage, right?
Yes, it's very, that is very correct. But on the backside of that, of course, some of our is, well, and maintenance and ridership itself is slightly down. So associated with COVID and with some of the essentially economic pattern changes that we are seeing in our city and work from home and so on. So, so my point is some of the fundamental metrics of how we should be designing our system are also changing. There's many, many factors. And I'm just saying they all relate.
What I, what I'm getting to though is, is the bus operator shortage is what is likely largely impacting, in addition to partly the maintenance piece, but largely bus operator, excuse me, is what is driving a lot of these shortcomings. I mean, this trolley system is not a bus, so it's not as if we're going to be pulling, right, bus operators who are already short and having them run trolleys. Is that correct? It, it seems correct to me, but let me know if I'm wrong there.
Well, typically, the, obviously, we haven't hired trolley operators. The, the operators of the trolley in the earlier version, some of them were retired operators. Okay, it's a good job for a second career type thing for a trained operator. Also, this is very limited service, which, and that, that FTA has agreed to, so only kind of a weekend type service that would not be, for instance, an everyday pullout, like an everyday 4:30 in, in the morning, all the way till, you know, until 1:00 in the morning. So it is very, very different, and it does not have near the labor load. But it would, a professional operator, union operator, for instance, from 788 would be the best, and I think would also make the trolley system safer. And so to, to be very clear, yes, that would be a metro employee who would be professionally trained and would contain some of the rigor of our safety training.
Thank you.
Oh, but could you just confirm, even though it's in the MOU, for the benefit of the media that might be watching, that sometimes don't pay attention to minutia or details, the hours of service that you brought up is limited?
Yes, the, the hours of service right now that FTA has agreed to is only 32 hours of service. So that would be a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, right now, four days a week. And part of this authorization is you would be authorizing me to sitting down with FTA and our, and our funding partners and being sure of what does that exactly mean? I, I would note, for instance, that in a, in the point of an ice storm, it, it wouldn't make sense to run the trolley, at least in this version of it, when it's 10 degrees out. Doesn't make sense. So there are those important details that need to be gone over and be sure that we are now understanding what this asset is. And it is true, I do not consider it a transit asset. That is, that is accurate. I've said it before, I'll say it again. But now we need to accept what it is and therefore make that adjustment. So weekend service makes much more sense. Good weather service makes more sense. And then we're able to run the trolley within its means. In other words, within the means of the, of the flow of funds from the taxing district.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. Go ahead, Terry. I'm sorry.
I would just say thank you.
And maybe I missed it in the, in the information that was provided. Thank you, everyone, for all of the comment and, and the explanations associated with this relationship. My only question is, is there a, a matter or a provision to recapture administrative costs or a portion of the administrative costs associated with this relationship?
So yes, very typically, we charge hourly fees within this managerial agreement, and there are loads associated with that. So we do schedule the services with loads of hours and so on, and that does help us run essentially, obviously, we're not a for-profit agency. What that is, is to try to pay for some of the administrative load that we do carry. There are specific loads that are budgeted right now, for instance, for accounting and so on, to be sure that, you know, we're going to have to do separate accounting for this. And so there are administrative loads that are contained within that budget.
Thank you.
I don't want to step on anybody. I just got a couple of quick things, and then I think, let, just to get to the heart of it all, and then maybe you guys can understand where I'm coming from. When we met before, and I know not everybody was on the board, I, I know Herb and Fred and Rose, everything here is nearly the same. Okay, so let's just get to the, Talby, you just said that, and I mean, make sure I get it right. Without the grant funding from East-West Gateway, we would not, the, the trolley wouldn't be able to run. Did I hear that correctly?
So on this
You know, afford to run.
So the long-term financial viability, so if we're to run it for multiple years, you, you need the infusion of the East-West Gateway on this conservative budget right now. Yes, that is true.
I just, I didn't want to just kind of make it simple. And so my point is that even if they say yes this next time, they've already said no, but if they say yes this next time, that funding, Herb, you said, wouldn't be available till next year. That's
That's, that's my understanding is what I've been told, that if it was, gets approved in August, and that's if, then the funds wouldn't be available until early of 2023.
Okay, so there's really not all this cash out there. The other, the other thing is, I keep hearing, and I think the biggest concern that I hear from Talby and from everybody else is we would be putting our funding, our funding at risk. Okay? We, the same exact arguments, you guys know this, the exact same arguments were used last time, that we would lose grant funding. It would be a stain on all of St. Louis. The FTA came in, and I believe it's the same, because I saw his signature, Maq Teed, I can't remember his last name, came in, and we asked over and over, and that's basically what flipped the board. We asked, would this affect our funding moving forward? And he says, no, because this isn't your project. This is not a by-state project. This is the TDD. That's who's on the hook. Like I tried to mention earlier on, it's not St. Clair County. It's not, uh, you know, it, it, this is a T, the taxing district, a trolley development district. That's who's on the hook. I don't want to get us sidetracked with everything that we have going on for transit in the greater St. Louis area. And this is going to cost resources. It is going to cost money. It's going to cost our time and energy. So anyway, that's what I'd like to do. Again, if that's the number one concern that I'm hearing from everybody to me, and the major funding's not going to come until next year, let's get the FTA in here, and let's ask them before we say yes, because to my knowledge, and you said that yesterday on the phone, Talby, that if we say yes, this would be the last meeting that this board has to, you can, you can execute the contract after this. Okay, which we don't know exactly all the particulars and how much it's going to cost. You can execute that without the board. My point is, let's get the FTA in here. Let's ask them, will this affect us by state and getting our grant funding moving forward? That's what I propose. And we would table this until we hear from the FTA.
I, I just want to address one of the issues, and that's, that's the conversation that occurred a couple of years ago with, with Maq Teed Ahmed, who is the FTA administrator. What I heard him say very clearly was the clawback provision is not the TDD. The clawback provision is the $25 million that the federal government put into the program and would be required to be paid back. That would come out of the funders of the, of, of the original grant. So while, while you can say that that would just be the TDD, it would also affect St. Louis City and St. Louis County. And what I also heard him say is that it would affect the ability of our region to competitively bid for contracts and for support from the FTA. So that is what I heard from Maq Teed. Did I hear, excuse me, did I hear that by-state would be on the hook for this? No. Did I hear that this would, could reasonably affect the, our ability as a region to get additional funding for transit projects? Unequivocally, he said yes.
I did not hear that. I didn't hear that, Rose, at all. I, and that we, because we've all asked that. I don't know if, if that was the case, if that was the case, then why did the entire board, all but you, vote no? If that would, if it was going to affect us moving forward, this board would have voted yes to take on that.
I did not say that it was going to affect by-state's ability. What I said was, and the, I, I can't speak to how other board members voted. I will say that there was a financial risk previous to this that does not exist for the agency now.
Yeah, I, I, I'd love to get, if this is the case, and again, what, what is the hurt of it? What, what would be the hurt to get, and I asked this yesterday at Talby, I said, why isn't the FTA in here? We're making this important decision, so we could ask him straight up. Why, why should we rush this today? Why don't we just table it, get him in here, and then we can ask him directly? That, to me, it makes the most sense. If the project's going to shut down altogether in a year, if we don't get this funding from East-West Gateway, who already denied the funding, all right, what is the risk in, in the next month, getting a Maq Teed back in front of us?
So I, I can address that quickly, or?
Well, I It's fine. I, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out whether or not the Commissioner Cox is making a motion.
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll motion to table this until we can get the FTA rep back to explain or the St. Louis region or transit's funding, if we don't do this. I don't, I don't know how you want to word that motion, but I'd like to table this until we can get the FTA in to answer our questions.
Is there a second? There's no second. So we go back to the original conversation, which is, are there other comments about the memorandum of agreement that's on the table? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No, yeah, opposed.
The motion carries. Thank you. Uh, the next item is the operations report. I'm sorry, unscheduled business, Talby?
We have none. Thank you, Chair.
And an operations report from Mr. Stewart.
Good morning, commissioners. Can everyone hear me? I hope so. Okay, good. There's been a lot of discussion already this morning about our workforce and its impact on our operations. So I'd like to, I think you have in your package a workforce update as of February 11th. As, has been discussed, our workforce continues to impact our operations. Metro Bus missed over 4,000 trips in January, 4.67% of its trips. Metro Link is not missing any trips, but our workforce shortage is impacting our management team, who's stepped up to fulfill some of the obligations as it relates to Metro Link. Color Ride denied over 9,000 boardings out of 42,000 trips requested. 21% of total trips were denied. This, we're hoping that our service change expected in March will help alleviate this. It will help us to match our labor resources with our ability to meet our service obligations. From a staffing level standpoint, in all areas of operation, I'll give you just a few. Metro Bus operators were down 15%. Metro Link operators, 4, 4.95%. Color Ride operators, over 28%. We are doing a number of things and continue to do a number of things to assist in alleviating this problem. One of the things we talked about at our last meeting was to increase starting wages for key positions. And there'll be more about that later in our discussions this morning. We continue to have our sign-on bonuses. 136 new hires are in the sign-on bonus program. 19 sign-off bonus have, bonuses have been paid to date, and others are scheduled to happen in March. We have our retention bonuses, which we gave the first installment, I think it was, in, in October, November. The second half of that bonus is due to be paid in March. In terms of our pipeline, we have 20 bus operators either in training or, or scheduled to go in training. We have 11 Color Ride operators that have that same status. And our Metro Link operators, we expect to graduate eight Metro Link operators here in, in, in February. So we continue our efforts to improve our hiring and retaining. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Are there any questions for him? Seeing none, thanks for the report. Hope things continue to get better.
Thank you.
Myra, may we have the dates for future meetings, please?
Yes, the next Safety and Security Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 10th at 8:30. The next Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, March 18th at 8:30. The next Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting is scheduled also for March 18th, following the Operations Committee. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Friday, April 22nd at 8:30.
Thank you. I need a motion that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under the By-State Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080 D1 Legal, D5 Employee Negotiations, D7 Purchasing and Contracts, and D10 Auditors.
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Pistello?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you all. See you in a few minutes. We are now reconvened to the Board of Commissioners' open meeting, Friday, February 18th, 2022, at 10:10. Do I have a motion to approve minutes from the November 8th Executive Session? November 19th, Board of Commissioners' Executive Session. December 10th, Special Meeting, Board of Commissioners' Executive Session. December 28th, Executive Committee Meeting, Executive Session.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote for those minutes, please?
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the executive session consent agenda items A and items B as outlined on the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Memorandums of Understanding with ATU, the Resolution 1191, as, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the divert compensation 457 Plan Resolution 1194 as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes from the Board of Commissioners and Committee Meetings, July 2020 through December 2020, with the redactions as presented, as open records?
I so move.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you all, that concludes the business, and if there is no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The regular meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Great, everybody have a great weekend, thanks very much.